Good afternoon. I call the meeting of the Senate Committee on Finance and Revenue to order. Today is Thursday, February 8th, 2024, approximately 3:02 PM. And at this time, I'm going to be opening up a public hearing on Senate Bill 1589. 1549.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Senate Bill 1549. We do have a dash one amendment as well, so I'll get to that in just a second. But the proposal here is to exempt from Oregon personal income tax up to $17,500 in retirement or pension income that's received for the service in the armed forces of the United States. That term is defined to include Army, Navy, Air Force, Marine Corps, Coast Guard, and Space Force as well in the legislation. It does specify that the subtraction is available to a taxpayer that's not attained the age of 63 years at the close of the taxable year, so they're under the age of 63. And it does provide rulemaking authority to Department of Revenue. The subtraction amount, that $17,500 that could be subtracted from income, is indexed to inflation, beginning with tax year 2025. And this would be applicable for tax years 2024 through tax year 2029. And, Mr. Chair, this may sound a little familiar. This is largely a reintroduction of Senate Bill 540 from the previous legislative session. The dash one amendment does specify that the subtraction in Senate Bill 1549 couldn't be used at the same time as an existing law subtraction Oregon has for all federal employment income earned prior or earned from service prior to October 1st, 1991. So that is, you wouldn't be able, that's an existing law subtraction, you wouldn't be able to stack or use them on the same income. So you could use both subtractions if you had income from pre-91, and then you could use the military one for post-91 retirement income. But you couldn't essentially subtract the same income twice. So that's the dash one amendment, is just clarifying that, that it's not duplicative in that way, Mr. Chair.
Okay, well, then I will call up our first witnesses for today, and I'd like to call up our Senators Thatcher and Solman, and welcome.
Thank you. Chair Meek, Vice Chair Boquist, members of the committee, for the record, I'm Janine Solman. I'm the state senator for Senate District 15, which includes areas of Forest Grove, Cornelius, Hillsborough, and the Rock Creek area of Washington County. I am here today with this opportunity to testify with my colleague in support of Senate Bill 1549. Colleagues, this bipartisan bill is being reintroduced in a joint effort with Senator Kim Thatcher. I was originally compelled to bring forth this bill during the 2023 legislative session after I had a door conversation with a military veteran named Thomas Murdoch, who had happened to be a former North Plains constituent of mine. Oregon ranks last out of the 50 states on this quality-of-life metric for military retirees, and now has one of the highest percentages of homeless veterans, according to a report published in 2023. As a wife and daughter of military veterans, I believe we should be doing all that we can to attract opportunity for veterans to live, work, and thrive right here in Oregon. While Senate Bill 1549 focuses on veterans below the age of 62, it is a crucial first step to offering this type of financial relief to veterans of all ages. Veterans bring a rich work experience, professional training, strong work ethic, and commitment to purpose to our workforce. In a time where many positions remain open and unfilled in Oregon, we should be doing all that we can to attract opportunity for veterans to live, work, and thrive right here in Oregon. We see many help-wanted signs out for bus drivers, for law enforcement, for firefighters in building trades, just to name a few high vacancy jobs. Let's attract more veterans to Oregon by passing this bill. Military veterans have dedicated their lives and their family time to serving and protecting our nation, and they should feel the honor for that service. Colleagues, thank you for your time today and your attention, and I urge your support of such an important bill. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. And you want, do you need to slip out?
Is it okay? I'm sorry.
That's why she went first.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I should have said that.
No, no. I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you for coming.
I just wanted to make sure. I mean, it was, she did introduce it first, that's fine. Just for the record, my name is Kim Thatcher. I represent Senate District 11. And when you just look at it through the years, whether it's my great-great-grandpa, I don't remember what degree, in the Civil War era, we don't take sufficient care of our veterans. And especially in Oregon compared to other states, Oregon is failing to live up to the standard that other states have set. Even then, I think we could do more. So, especially when it comes to our retired veterans, this bill, as was mentioned, is the same as Senate Bill 540 from last session with the dash four amendments taken in. I think it passed out of this committee. So thank you for that. We'll give it another go. I don't, we'll see what happens. It's modeled after the bill in the state of Georgia. And even though it doesn't do as much as I would like, it does focus on the more or less working-age retirees so that we can hopefully attract more of those folks into the, into our state. And it would exclude the taxable net income up to $17,500 of the retirement income received by military taxpayers under the age of 63. So, we all know, we should realize the importance of the veterans, all our veterans, in our freedom, everything we enjoy, and the sacrifices that have been made. I just think this is a very small step, and I appreciate you passing it last time. I hope you can do so again. Oregon has absolutely no retirement or income pension exemptions for veterans under the age of 63. So this, the goal is to eventually take the age out of the bill and, you know, out of the law if it's passed, and then apply it across the board for all military pensioners. But this is an issue for another legislative session. There are, just for your information, 26 other states who exempt veterans' pensions from their state income taxes altogether, and 25 of these have a state income tax. So in bringing the bill forward this session, I found that because Oregon doesn't offer exemptions for income taxes to veterans, and because this bill was vetted in the 2023 session, it would be a good move on our part to offer this bill. So I just hope you pass it again. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Senator. I appreciate, I appreciate you bringing this bill. So does Senate Bill 1549 with the dash one mirror Senate Bill 540 with the dash four?
The dash one, my understanding, is something the Department of Revenue wanted to make sure that there wasn't a double dip. That's all. The dash fours are already a part of this bill, the base bill right now.
Okay, thank you. I assume so, but thank you.
We're just looking at the revenue impacts. We have, we know which ones to look at, so, thank you. Senator Golden.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Good to see you, Senator Thatcher. Is there any element, whatever, relating to need, financial need here? I guess, is there any cap on the amount of income an individual might make that would make him or her ineligible for this deduction?
The cap is, it only goes up to $17,500 of the first $17,500.
I don't think that's clear.
But then, it doesn't say, well, because you make over this amount, you're not able to deduct that $17,500.
There's no cap on total income that makes someone ineligible for the...
I don't believe so.
Thank you.
Okay, no further questions. And thank you, Senator Thatcher, for coming forward today.
Thank you very much.
And thanks for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call up Representative Heeb. And on deck, we will have Steve Ehrig and Mr. John Calhoun. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. I come today because I know a lot of early retirees from...
The record your name.
My name, State Rep. James Heeb, House District 51.
Wonderful, thank you.
But I bring, I come here to advocate for this bill today because I have a lot of friends that would fall into this classification. And the individuals that would fall into this classification have either done their career 20 to 30, well, 20 to 40 years in the military, or been medically discharged due to being shot or losing arms or legs. So this demographic, yeah, they're maybe, you know, relatively young for retirement age. But some of my friends that have been retired early, they've paid a severe price to this nation, and they have earned a little reprieve from their income tax. And one gentleman that I know that lives in Canby, he's a friend of mine, he was a Marine Corps Force Reconnaissance. He's one of those skydiving bubble frog guys. I know there's a better term for it, but he's been all over the place. But he has just hit 60 recently, and he is having trouble because he was hit with some grenades in Nicaragua, fighting the cartels down in South America. And he is having some severe troubles, almost like amnesia and just fits of like not knowing where he's at. And he can't work anymore. And he's, he gave a lot in service to this nation. And I do not qualify, I wouldn't qualify under this, but the guys that I know that do qualify for it, they've earned it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Representative Heeb. I appreciate that. Any questions? No, I just want to thank you, and yeah, just reiterate, I don't believe a lot of our military personnel that are retiring are, you know, making six figures outside of their retirement, but I do appreciate them. We did have a Colonel last year that came, that I think was from the Seattle, Washington area, and he is an educator, and basically stated that this, you know, that a lot of our veterans do base their decisions on where they can relocate, based on their, you know, economic circumstances, so.
Yes, Chair. If I may add one little bit more, that is actually true, my uncle, he retired from the Air Force, and instead of coming back to Oregon after his retirement, he moved to Boise. So to, because of that, yeah, they're a little more favorable to veterans.
Well, thank you so much, and we appreciate your testimony today.
Absolutely. Thank you.
You're welcome. And then, Mr. Steve Ehrig, I believe you are remote. Do we have Ms. E. there, Lisa? Feel free to unmute yourself, turn your camera on.
All right.
We can hear you now? Yes, sir.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Meek and members of the committee. My name is Steve Ehrig. I live in Oregon City, and I'm here to speak in opposition to Senate Bill 1549. I served in the U.S. Navy from 1968 to 1972, and was stationed in Vietnam in 1969, '70. Following my separation from active duty, I returned to Oregon to enroll in college with the help of the GI Bill. I received my bachelor's and master's degrees from what is now Western Oregon University in Monmouth, Oregon. I did not qualify for any veteran's pension. I returned to my home state of Oregon because that is where I was born, where my family and friends lived, where I wanted to go to school, and where I wanted to live and work and enjoy all the state had to offer following graduation. If an income tax reduction would have been important in determining where I lived, the state of Washington would have been an ideal site to return to, and Washington State University would have met all of my academic needs. But what wouldn't, but that would not have been sufficient reason to move away from friends and family, especially after being away for the previous four years. If the goal of Senate Bill 1549 is to recruit veterans to Oregon, I think this bill does not reflect fully or nor fully appreciate how we determine where we want to reside and what factors are of greatest value. I very much support and appreciate greater spending on veterans who need the help. However, the tax incentive described in Senate Bill 1549 would only be available to a very small percentage of veterans in Oregon, and it is not based on need nor on war injuries. The money for this target population, approximately $9 million a year, I believe would be better allocated in supporting veterans with PTSD, those who are homeless, veterans with families, those with disabilities, and veterans who require public support. Thank you very much for listening to my comments.
You are welcome, and thank you, and no questions. Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
And welcome, Mr. Calhoun. And then on deck is Mr. Steve Wright.
Good afternoon, Chairman Meek, Vice Chair Boquist, members of the committee. My name is John Calhoun, and I'm representing Tax Fairness Oregon, a network of volunteers who advocate a rational and equitable tax code. SB 1549 exempts from state income tax portion, a portion of military retirement pay. We oppose policies that treat one kind of income differently than other, another. Legislators and other proponents claim that the tax exemption would attract recent military retirees to Oregon employers and universities, and we beg to differ. The incentive is insufficient to motivate retirees who would benefit. For those adverse to income taxes, states with no income tax and many military bases, for example, Washington, Texas, Florida, would be more appealing. Even states with an income tax but a total exemption on military pensions will rank higher than Oregon for those motivated by a special tax break. However, other factors drawing a person to Oregon are more determinative: family, jobs, climate, environment. I'm a Vietnam veteran that moved to Oregon almost 40 years ago. My wife had family in Jervis. I had a job at Intel, and I liked the easy access to the outdoors for camping and skiing. Family, job, climate. Now, I didn't have a military pension, but the idea that lowered income taxes on a portion of my income would have motivated me to move to states like Texas or Florida, or even across the river to Washington State, when my job was in Hillsborough, would have made me laugh. SB 1549 is not designed to help veterans that need help. Every one of the legislators that testified here talked about veterans who need help, but that's not what this bill does. Only 2.6% of current Oregon veterans would get this exemption, and this small sliver already have incomes that are above the median Oregon household of an income of $87,000. LRO estimated last year that a third of the eligible veterans would have adjusted gross income below $80,000, another third between 80 and 150, and the remaining third above $150,000. So they are six figures. Are these the veterans you want to target with a tax break? I'm surprised that proponents of this bill want to get the state into the recruiting business. Recruiting out-of-state employees for industry is not a proper role of government. It is done and should be done by employers. The state's role is to create the economic and social environment that makes our state attractive. If recruiting veterans is for the educational benefits, something I've heard others claim, that they bring to our universities, this bill is poorly aimed. Only a small minority of veterans leaving the service today have pensions, but the rest have educational benefits. Military training says go after the bigger target. One more point. During the 1990s, the legislature passed a series of laws classifying pension income as taxable, including taxes on purse benefits. Granting a benefit to a small slice of Oregonians would be unfair, stimulating demands for equal treatment. How would we justify to police, fire, teachers, or others who retire younger than 62 with pensions that they must pay taxes on their retirement income while military retirees get an exemption? And do you really want to open this can of worms? It's an issue that the legislature had to struggle with in the 90s because of court cases involving just this kind of inequity. That's all I have to say, and if you want to thank me for my service, you'll vote no on SB 1549.
Thank you, Mr. Calhoun, and thank you for your service. Was not aware of that.
Well, I assume then.
And then, yes, next, Steve Wright?
Yes.
Welcome. And then on deck, Mr. Greg Arnold, who is remote.
Chairman Meek and fellow committee senators, my name is Stephen Wright, and I am a Purple Heart veteran who was shot in Vietnam and spent the next six months in a military hospital before returning to the United States. Currently live in Portland. I'm testifying in opposition to Senate Bill 1549. My testimony is really a very personal story, though. Many years ago, I moved my family across the country from Portland so that our three adopted Korean children could best thrive in an accepting society and culture than what they had experienced before. And I also found myself a better job. Did we consider taxes in our decision to move to Portland? No. Should we have? I don't think so. Because my family's happiness and opportunities that we could have in Oregon were so much better than where we moved from. Rather than supporting this bill, please consider doing more to help our volunteers living on the streets and are suffering without mental health support, and not those veterans financially secure with retirement benefits who may also be gainfully employed after retiring from the military. SB 1549 doesn't help anyone based on their disability or poverty. It only benefits a small fraction of Oregon's debts. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your testimony, and thank you for your service. Appreciate your sacrifice.
Thank you.
No questions? Well, thank you. And Mr. Greg Arnold, Commander of the Three Rivers VFW Post, 1324. Oregon City.
Well, good afternoon, Chairman Meek, members of the committee. My name is Greg Arnold. I live in Westland, Oregon. I am the commander, as Mark said, of the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 1324 in Oregon City. I have held this position since 2018. I am also a U.S. Navy retiree with 22 years of active service, retiring in 1993. I have the older tax exemption for my military pension that was in place when I first filed my Oregon state taxes in 1994, which I am grateful for. That exemption helped me greatly to get my Plant Journeyman Electrical License. I subsequently gained employment at Oregon Steel Mills, which I worked at for 15 years. That exemption also ensured that I was able to pay my bills on time in many instances. These are just a couple of examples of what that exemption helped me. I fully support SB 1549 for tax relief for veterans who have a military pension. My thoughts on this are, it is only fitting to have such an exemption for our retired veterans who have made a commitment to defend this country, at times risking their lives, serving in dangerous places and situations. It is a debt this country, this state of Oregon, can never fully repay. An exemption of this sort on military retirement by the state of Oregon would show retired veterans and the public at large that choose this great state of Oregon as their home, that it recognizes the services and sacrifices defending the United States of America, its Constitution, against all enemies, foreign and domestic. Thank you for the opportunity to testify concerning SB 1549.
Thank you, Commander Arnold. Appreciate your time this afternoon. And next, we will call up Representatives from Department of Revenue, Ms. Marjorie Taylor and Mr. Ben Gilli. Welcome. And Lisa, is there anybody else signed up besides them?
Chairman Meek, members of the committee, for the record, I'm Marjorie Taylor from the Department of Revenue. I just wanted to acknowledge the collaboration from Senator Thatcher and Senator Solman as we work through details on Senate Bill 540 and now on this. And yes, we did make a recommendation, as you can see in the written testimony, that perhaps there's consideration given for this dash one amendment that was drafted. And I have Ben Gilli with me to answer questions.
Again, for the record, my name is Ben Gilli, Oregon Department of Revenue, Chairman Meek, Vice Chair Boquist, members of the committee. Again, we, when we done the, we prepared the written testimony, again, we were just bringing up, again, the potential of a double dip, and we just wanted to get clarification from the committee as far as what was the intent. And so, again, in collaboration with Senator Thatcher's office, then we did propose some language, and so we have reviewed that, and that definitely addresses and clarifies, I should say, the intent of this subtraction, so.
The dash one, any questions? Because, yeah, just clarifying, it sounded like the initial legislation was in 1991. I thought, from what I understood, it was for income retired, if you were retired before 1991, but it sounds like Commander Arnold retired in 93 or 94, and he's receiving that benefit. So how does, and was it 90, what's the, what was the deadline for receiving that income?
Yeah, so Chairman Meek, so federal retirees who have service prior to 19, October 1st, 1991, are exempt from state taxation. That's a federal law. And so, in that case, that, if they retired prior to 1991, they would receive 100% subtraction of their federal pension. For those who have service prior to that date and after, then there is an apportionment.
A portion.
And so, what this is clarifying is that they would still receive the federal pension subtraction, and anything that was earned out, that's attributable to service past October 1st, 1991, would be eligible for this subtraction, up to $17,500.
Okay, Senator Finley.
Thank you. I need to ask a clarifying question.
Yes.
Because I have federal career before 1991. I believe that's a state law. It's not a federal law.
Okay.
I believe that is a state law, because of a settlement issue that federal employees sued to become a part of that suit.
Busted my balloon there, Senator.
Pardon?
You busted my balloon again.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Mr. Easton might be able to reply to that, or?
No, Mr. Chair, that's, yeah, I was going to agree with the Senator and how he was describing it. It's required by federal law, through those court cases and everything. So it is in compliance with federal law that Oregon has that on the books. One note I would have, Mr. Chair, as well, is the clarification of the dash one, that's part of the revenue impacts that you all have for the previous bill as well. So those had that built in, that you wouldn't be able to do the double dip.
Okay.
So those numbers are for 1549 with the dash one as well that are applicable. So there's no changes in the revenue numbers that the committee has.
Okay. Great, great. Any, yes, Vice Chair Boquist.
I have a question as staff, and first, I'll clarify, I have retirement time prior to 1991, and last year, it's the good Senator from eastern Oregon who said, you don't know what I'm talking about? I said, I have no idea what you're talking about. And so I've been gracious for all the tax people back who like this, and been giving my money to the state of Oregon for years for my retirement, until this last year, when I suddenly realized that 62% of it was non-taxable in the state of Oregon. So if you've lost your 62%, I just apologize, you can blame Senator Finley, because he's the one who told me I was dumb for not using it. That being said, Kyle, I'm curious on the, this was handed out, I know, this must be from last year.
Yeah.
Looks like a fiscal. And I'm curious as to, it says 2325, it's in negative $8.4 million, which would indicate there's X amount of people probably going to take this in 2025, 2325. And then it goes up to 18 million, and then it goes up to 19.4 million. I don't remember if you're here yesterday when I was railing on the House Committee on, we're only working 33 hours a week, and you're telling us we need more immigrants and more labor. How did you come up, how did we jump from 8 to 18 million? Are we anticipating that this is going to draw more people in to the state of Oregon? Is that what you're assuming here?
Yes, Senator Boquist, the, so the numbers you have, and they align with, they're going to look similar to the revenue impact statement from a year ago. The one difference, just for those people that are chewing that up, is this bill starts a year later, and that changes the CPI adjustment for the $17,500 starts a year later. So those numbers are a little bit different, just so if anyone's looking online. In terms of the... In terms of the difference there between the 8.4 million, that's catching one tax year in the biennium. And then in 2527, we'd be catching two years. So that's where you get the doubling, plus that CPI adjustment starts to kick in. So more of the income, that $17,500 then grows in the next year, and the year after that, it'll be adjusted for CPI. So that'll cause some of the increase in the revenue loss, as you're essentially exempting more of that income. But that initial large jump is just the fact that this would start midway through the biennium.
Follow, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you're the economist. So, and what some proponents were saying is, is the goal is to try and get more people to move here, which we listened to our state economists tell us, "We're pretty bleak, because we don't have enough workers." Right? Is this a government-type program that answers the call to the state economists? I mean, how do we model that?
Political question, right?
I mean, do we use OTIM to model that?
Yes, Senator Boquist, in terms of the estimates, it's based upon looking at a historical amount of the individuals that receive this income. Moving forward, the baseline for the estimates here was really sticking with a flat forecast for the number of individuals, and that's pretty consistent with what we've had over the last 10 years. There was a little bit of a dip in the last couple of years. That's really, in many ways, in line with what the committee heard from in the revenue and economic forecasts of some of the population dip, but the outlook is still positive growth in later years. So for these estimates, we kept that fixed. If this policy is to attract more people, they wouldn't be included necessarily in the revenue impact numbers you have here, but they wouldn't be part of the baseline. So that would almost reflect, there wouldn't be a revenue loss if they live outside of the state and they come here solely because Oregon enacts this legislation. So it really is based upon that baseline numbers historically and then going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm only driving, not particularly on this bill. The state economist has been here three times in a row in three quarterly forecasts and told us, "We're in trouble, because we don't have enough labor." So I'm just pointing out, and "we don't have enough housing," as the good Senator down to the right is going to tell you, and other things. And so, I'm just sort of looking at like, okay, what are some of the dynamics we as revenue committee members and policymakers need to be looking at to address this labor issue? Is this one of them, or there are other ones? We also know, as I was just in a committee this morning testifying, we have a serious housing problem, as the House Revenue Committee knows. And it's like, okay, if we can't figure out how to get housing, you can't have anybody, they're not going to come here and live in tents in the streets. So listen, we're hoping they're not. So anyway, but that was just what I was driving at, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Yes, Senator Jama.
So the House is to wish it is working progress, Senator.
It's working progress.
I guess my question is follow-up with what Senator Golden earlier asked about the income means testing. Do you, maybe this question for the staff, do you remind me if we had any income requirement or income caping there? Because we want to support those who want, who are low income or who are, veterans who are, we want to support, but I think if somebody doesn't need the income, I mean, that's a question, do we need to put in some sort of income requirement?
Some cap or something?
Cab or something.
Like total net income, gross income or something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there mechanics to that, or how would that look?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, certainly, in a lot of cases, if there's a, what's referred to as means testing approach, adjusted gross income is probably the number that gets used the most, as it's something that's on the tax return, and it does capture total income, and there's a little bit of additional detail there. But that's the one that's often used for other programs as well that do have an indexing factor. We do have some information that we can share with the committee. I should note, in the last few months of the interim, LRO has been working on a report that does some background information related to military pensioners, in that we do have those that have income by their AGI. So it would give the committee a sense, and those that are less than 63, and then for all taxpayers that are receiving military retirement income. So we do have some of those figures that we can share with the committee. The report itself is nearly complete, so we'll have that out to the committee as well here in the coming days, I think, at this point. But yes, we can definitely share that information, and that can be a helpful tool if you are looking at using AGI as some sort of factor for qualification.
Thank you. And I agree. We do, if we're going to implement some type of program like this, we want to make sure it's for those that need it the most and that are struggling to. Because if you are, if, there are some veterans that I served with that I served for eight years, and they stuck it out for 20 or 22 years, received half of their, you know, monthly income as their retirement, and their retirement's probably, you know, $2,500 a month. And so, you know, 20 years of dedication for that type, it's not, you know, if that's all they have to survive off, I'd love them to be able to keep more of it to be able to pay their rent and expenses. But if we're talking about somebody that was, you know, an engineer, officer, that, you know, came out and double-dipping maybe even in a government job, then yeah, not necessarily worried about them. And so, happy to look at and see if there are some, you know, limitations or caps we need to look at. Be happy to, you know, and I'm sure they would say the same. They don't need the exemption, but we're not going to make it volunteer, voluntary, so. If you're open to that, we can get some details to take a look at. Okay? Thank you so much for your testimony and being available for questions. And that is the, wait a minute, I do have one more. I'm sorry, Mr. Ben Gilli. No, I'm sorry, that was, no.
We have one more to just sign up.
Oh, okay, we just had one more to sign up. And what's their name? Oh, welcome. Sorry about that. Yeah, make sure you just introduce yourself, and thank you for being willing to come and speak.
All right, thank you so much. Chair Meek and the members of the committee, I appreciate your time today. My name is Michael Eshte. I'm a retired veteran living in Beaverton. I'm testifying as against SB 1549 in its current form that would exempt up to $17,500 in military retirement annual pay from state income tax. I enlisted background from Portland in 1978 and served on active duty until retiring in 2004. During that time, I married and started a family in California. A year after my return from deployment in Iraq in 2003, my family made a decision for me that it was time to retire and come back to Oregon. I'm here. We chose Oregon for its beauty and high scores for livability and the general peacefulness, emphasis on peacefulness, and security of our Oregon communities. After seeing Iraq, I wanted and needed a peaceful place and serenity of Portland metro area in 2004 to call home. This was hands-down the ideal place for my family to call home on retiring. Were taxes a primary consideration in our decision to move to Oregon? No. Did I do a value-to-benefit analysis? No. My family's happiness, security, and excellent schools were more important to me at the time. In fair taxes, I believe that my taxes are fair, levied upon the benefits that I receive as an Oregonian. I believe this bill falls short in several areas as it attempts to convey a message from the people of Oregon to her military retirees, who, like myself, have already chosen Oregon as a home. We're here. We're here because we're Oregonians. We love this place. While I cannot account for everyone, and I do not mean to speak for anyone but myself, I am not personally aware of any of my friends who are saying we want a partial deduction on our military pay for being here. Secondly, this bill contains a clock set to timeout at age of 63, which seemed odd to me until today. I think I understand it now, and I'm thankful for having been here to, I do believe, understand it. Because if it is designed that for those of us who are here, we don't need as much as those that we would like to pull to Oregon, I understand it. Third, I do not believe the amount offered is enough to sway a military retiree to choose our state. In fact, a friend of mine who retired as a Master Gunnerie Sergeant E9 in November of this last year, after 27 years of service, will have a retirement check that he brings here, and he did do an analysis. Told him about how beautiful Oregon is. He came up here, he believes every word that I said, because he's seen it. Loves our state, loves Washington, too. And then when he did that analysis between Washington and Oregon, he chose Washington, because they offered a different perspective on his retirement check. And he has a family to raise, and he needs to go back to work to pay for a house. That positive tax structure that was provided him is what won him over, because our sister state has 100% advantage. And this is not somebody like myself who grew up here and was likely to come back to Oregon, because I'm an Oregonian. This man served his country, earned a paycheck throughout the world, came back, evaluated us, and found us not quite there in comparison to our sister state. While I am grateful for the generous nature and surface-level intent of this bill, I believe the bill in its current form falls short, a positive note of sorts. After my friend chose Washington to call home, he accepted an employment offer to work near PDX and now works in Oregon. Washington State will continue to protect 100% of his military retirement. However, like so many, he now crosses the bridge into Oregon for employment. That's the lion's share, but I feel compelled, as an Oregonian, to share with you something that I want you to be aware of. If somebody said, "Why do you want, why did I want that Master Gunnerie Sergeant here?" That Master Gunnerie Sergeant is a man of integrity. He's got 27 years in the Marine Corps, like any branch, pick a branch. Those NCOs, those are men and women of capability. Those are men and women that provide stability to our communities. They're men and women that say, "How may I serve?" And then they put back, like Chair Meek's, and like yourselves. Those are men and women that have served, and we want to bring them back, but they have to raise a family. And if you provide that competitive advantages for us to compete with our sister states, that might be more likely. But in its current form, I don't see this occurring. And it's not that they wouldn't choose us, it's that financially, they need to raise a family, and I respect that. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I'm not after the money. I'm after bringing my friends and family and community members as veterans back to Oregon so that there are as many of us as is appropriate, so that we can provide a level of stability to our cities. And we say, you know what? It's okay. You'll be fine. Relax. And I thank you for my testimony here.
Thank you, Mr. Eshte, and I guess Senator Golden.
Mr. Chair, appreciate your testimony. Just for clarity, and make sure that I understand, I heard you say that your friend in Washington has all of his pension income, 100% of the pension income protected. Does, he has all of his income 100% protected in Washington, right? Because they don't have an income tax, right?
Well, yes, sir, that is correct. However, as soon as, the way I see this is, he earned a retirement from our United States military for 27 years' service outside of the state, never a dime here, but then he returned and considered us on the shortlist of places to raise a family. But then went to Washington, and his 100% of his retirement check is there, but he took a position at PDX, working in Oregon. So he'll pay taxes to Oregon, but we won't, and we won't touch his retirement, because it's not ours. But more importantly, we lose the opportunity to reach this Master Gunnerie Sergeant with all of his experience as an African-American positive person. And if anybody ever wanted to say, "Mike, give me the number privately. I want to call him," I'd give it to you privately for you to explore why is that, and to have a firsthand basis of a name. Because if I provide a factor, I want to provide the receipt so that you can validate what I'm saying is accurate. And that's what I have.
I believe you about what you're saying.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the characterization of our, you know, our military personnel when they do retire, even after just their, you know, three or four, five, six years of service. They do bring a lot of value to our communities.
And I think it's important to state, too, I'd be remiss if my colleagues that have been working with me for the past 14 months in a variety of groups, one of the things that they've shared with me is that the military is not alone in this endeavor. You've got teachers, you've got professors, you have medical professionals. You have all of these people that bring value that we could bring to our state, and we should actively, where appropriate, bring those people to our state to provide stability and higher education. I'm on board with that. But by the same token, as we look at that, if they travel with an educational-plus plan, if they travel with their own medical benefits, because they have that at retirement, if they have their own dental plan at retirement, and they already have a VA loan by which to purchase a house in the area, then they're not adding to our structure to decrease the amount. They add value to the amount, while at the same time providing a stability to say, "You know what, young lad? That's probably not a good thing to be doing. Why don't we go sit down and have a cup of coffee and have a chat about that?" And I know that there's a lot, I know you gentlemen, I know with frequency, you know what I'm talking about. I would like to see as many men and women, where appropriate, or numbers, to come to our state to provide that civility and to remind us of what it meant to be an Oregonian.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Very passionate. Thank you for signing up, too. Any other questions? Well, we do have another bill we need to work on, and so I do appreciate our testimony this afternoon. I'm going to be closing the public hearing on Senate Bill 1549.